Please hand the place to play. Pledge wills to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Bill, would you please in the service?
Yeah.
I'm going to call you guys, please.
Your heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for the beauty of the outdoors that you give to us. We thank you for the rain that you gave us recently. We just pray that it will continue to help those that need it. Your Lord, we pray that you watch over the activities of this meeting tonight, that they may be pleasing to you. Guide us in your way. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Jared, you on there?
Yeah, sir.
All right, Jared and Grant are both on. Good, thanks, guys. Reading and approval of minutes in the October fourth meeting, please.
Motion for Bill to read in the minutes and approval of minutes. Done.
Okay, motion by Bill.
Second.
Second by hack, discussion. All in favor of approving these minutes, say aye. Aye. Aye, both. Thank you. Approval of the agenda, any changes, additions to the agenda? Okay, so you motion approve the agenda?
Yes.
Motion by sir, second by hack. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Aye. All at the same time. Thank you. Five A, engineers report. Jared, for Grant, go ahead and take your way.
This is Jared, I'm going to go quick here. So, we have the water storage system project, and generally, the only update is that, again, we had a pre-construction meeting two weeks ago. They, we met with them, they, we've had a couple of meetings, talked about coordination, and they intend to put in the temporary access road. They were actually going to start today, but granted, to go with them and I, sounds like they might have a couple of guys that are, are feeling some sicknesses. So, he thought they would either start tomorrow or Wednesday. They have been in touch with landowners, and what I foresee is that the temporary road will, that's what they'll use to access the tank site. And then tank, or contractor number two, DN Tanks, will use that, most likely, starting in the spring. And if we get a nice fall, they, they might start on some miscellaneous things, but generally, most of it will be done in the spring. There could be some demolition work at the treatment plant on this winter. I don't know how much they'll do, but they'll, they'll probably do some labor in there, get things cleaned out. Otherwise, does anybody have any questions related to what's upcoming with that project?
Are they going to put a gate in there up, up, uh, where that fence is at right now, Jared?
Yes, two gates, there'll be one on that, um, right by the guy's house, and then one on the north side, where they get out of it.
Yeah.
I spoke to Angela today, and it sounds like that might be next year, he's going to get the road in, and then they'll do the gates later.
Yeah. Okay.
That's really all that's going on there. Again, if there's any questions on the schedule or what people are doing, email me, call. Everyone's welcome to join in the 9:00 AM construction meeting, if you would like, if you have time. You can ask questions there, or you can just listen in to get an update. It'll take about fifteen minutes each time, but it kind of sets the tone for the week, and lets everybody know what to expect, and it's good deal. Otherwise, stuff that more engineering is related in, we just, kind of a tiny year where we are, kind of filling out questionnaires, or applications, or talking about programs and money for next year. Really no updates, other than, we just fill out a few questionnaires for the guys on the water system. Um, and then, we're doing a questionnaire for you on the sanitary sewer system. Yep, North Dakota decides to use their ARCA money, or the infrastructure money in some of the ways that they're talking about. There could be some loan forgiveness or grant dollars out there. I know there's a special session coming up in November. Don't quote me on this, but North Dakota got a whole pile of ARCA dollars too, just like the cities, and just like the counties, and they're trying to figure out exactly how to do this, and how to prioritize this. So, I guess, just pay attention to that. Um, so there, there just could be more cost share opportunities coming from, from the state handing out cities, right? I think we're doing everything right, you know, we're, we're filling out these questionnaires, and just telling them, you know, Hazen has some needs of water heaters, there, there's some needs of some lining of some sewer pipes, there's some needs, you know, just generally there. Same, same questionnaire we fill out every year, but this year might be, might be unique. Otherwise, I don't have anything else, anything else for me, or for Grant?
I don't think so, Jared. Any, any on expedition to states?
I have not heard a thing, no.
Last I heard, it's still trial in February, March.
Okay, do you hear that, Jared? Monty said last he heard, it's still the trial in February, March. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
We'll stick on, we want you to just stick around for a few minutes, but.
Yeah.
We'll tend to sign off here.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, down to five A, um, six, yeah, you're right, six A. Coal communities grant updates, Travis Frye is here, talk to us about that. Travis is on the GED board, he's on the Mercer County Development Board, and also the Mayor of Beulah, so Travis, welcome. What do you know, what can you tell us?
The latest. The latest? Um, as far as grant applications go, um, they have submitted the tourism grant. Um, that's some of the things in there, the enhancing stuff out of Beulah Bay, looking at a regional convention center and hotel in the county. Um, outdoor recreation activities, and then marketing, new value-added opportunities related to tourism and outdoor recreation. Um, they submitted a STEM grant, um, which is looking at getting BSC and University of Mary to do some classes related to various aspects, as far as power plants and things like that. They're looking at setting up a location in Beulah. They're also looking at doing a T4 or high school program. It's kind of where they do the training at the high school, um, as far as the training workforce, training workforce, great jobs, opportunities in Mercer County. Um, but also, in the process of doing an EVA, um, grant, which would bring natural gas to Mercer County in a distribution system to both Beulah and Hazen. They're also looking at creating a travel and tourism recreational grant, which would, uh, which would have trails of Mercer County. There's actually a gal by the name of Amy Nash is looking at creating a not-for-profit organization to extend trails, multi-use paths throughout the county. Her vision is kind of something similar to what they got in the Dora, where it connects every, all the aspects of the Dora. They're also looking at a grant application to, to help with the training center. That's, that's the main grant applications. Also, the coal conversion counties are having a meeting Wednesday, the 27th, at 6:30, on the Beulah Civic Center. Lieutenant Governor Sanford is going to be there. They're going to talk a little bit about, um, the natural gas that the state's looking at doing. For private rights, um, information, they're looking at doing a, uh, natural gas pipeline from, um, kind of the Lockford City area, along the Highway 200 corridor. Hit eighty-three, go up the Highway two, and then over to Grand Forest. Until about a week ago, uh, the governor's office didn't realize that Beulah and Hazen didn't have natural gas. They assumed who did. So, they're looking to do what they can to assist our communities getting, um, natural gas. We've been working with, uh, North Dakota Gas. They were, um, highly commended, and actually, they received an award from the Main Street Initiative that was in progress last week. From the city of Hillsborough, and then kind of in that, oh, yeah, 29 corridor, they helped to allow those communities to get natural gas. Mainly for the sugar beet processing, but, uh, that's kind of the extent of what natural gas has been, been done in North Dakota to this point. So, that's who we've been working with, they've been highly, highly recommended, and, um, highly praised by the governor's office, so that's, it's good to hear that we're teaming with them. Kind of some other things that are happening in the area, um, that frac sand line, um, between Hazen and Stanton. They're still targeting opening up sometime next this year, I haven't seen anything yet, but, um, they're also looking at some value-added products out of that. Felspar, um, is utilized in the production of glass and porcelain products. So, since the way they're doing their operation, they'll actually be able to create the sand that's used in that product. And not require, um, a process and separating that's normally done to make that happen. Kind of some other things going on in the area. There's a few of these things where the details are pretty, pretty light, just because of confidentiality. But there's a company that's looking at setting up in either North Dakota, South Dakota, or Montana. They're kind of targeting Mercer County company that have, uh, has been in business for twenty-five years. They utilize local products to create their product and ship it out via rail and truck. So, they're looking at this area, because of the Highway 200 and 49 corridors. If they come here, it's looking at about twenty-five full-time employees. There's also interest in recycling plants in the county, so, um, the plastic recycling plants. The DGC area is accounted for pet plant, pet cam plants. A lot of the, uh, I don't know if you guys have been down 49 recently, but there's, um, looking at a couple of CO2 wellsite locations. So, they're doing exploratory stuff at this point.
Monty, can I mute this side of it? Okay, can I?
You just have to let them know that he's not muted or something.
Uh, Grant or, or Jared, you want to mute, mute your side, please?
That was my fault, I love that.
No problem, thanks.
Right. And then, also, Hazen meets, I don't know if you're aware of, they've been working with the State Commerce, um, doing upgrades to their existing facility, and actually looking at a second facility in Mercer County. With, uh, capacity of thirty head cattle per week, and looking at, looking at it to be supplied by beef grown in Mercer County, so. That's kind of a quick nutshell of. What's been going on, so, a lot of activity, I thought, I just couldn't kind of share what's been going on, and.
Yeah.
Questions, comments, uh, I may, may not know the answer, but, um, a lot of stuff in the works.
Yeah. Um, Travis, so, I know we worked on that grant that's supposed to be submitted by tomorrow for natural gas, with Jared Cudding is the writer. And that was based on the money from Glen Owlen, correct? If this line was to come down Highway 200, that'd be significantly.
Cheaper.
Changing, or that dollar, dollar figure for our communities.
Um, but yeah, that grant, uh, they're, they were reviewing that today, and we'll have to read this mid-tomorrow. With DGC, um, looking at hydrogen and possibly not producing natural gas, and actually consuming, um, there's been, uh, talk on, so. I guess, we're not looking to put all our eggs in one basket, we're looking at the Glen Owlen option to get natural gas here, we're looking at the state's option going down the 200 corridor, which would be from kind of the Lockford City area through here. There's also talk in Twin Buttes, um, taking their flared gas, and then actually putting a, uh, gas plant in Mercer County, so they'd have the wet and the dry. What this does is that, regardless of how we get it here, there could be three or four connections, which would all help in the supply of DGC if we switch. So, one way or another, we're trying to get it here.
I've got several other questions for Travis, but I'll let you guys go first. Feel free, any questions for Travis?
I was going to say, I guess, you know, I guess. I'm glad you're here, you know, and I mean, I guess, I guess, uh, sharing all this information, all this stuff I've kind of heard, you know, I mean, there's. You know, the project here, and project there, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know that it was really, really, I mean. Like a real, real, I guess, the project, you know, so.
A lot of this stuff has been in the works for about two years.
Yeah.
I'm hoping at least a percentage of this happens. If all of this happened, we're, we're talking about half a trillion dollar investment in the county. So, um, could be big, very great. Some is better than nothing. Yeah.
So, Travis, what do you know, what more do you know about the T4 program? I know that they, they do it in Lockford City, at the high school, and in Beulah, right?
And they also do it in Bowman.
Oh, they do it in Bowman as well, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that in conjunction with their A classes, is that what they're doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
T4 is what?
T4 is, um, where industry is starting to help train high school students.
Okay.
For, um.
I don't want to give them a 14, or, but I think it's.
Yeah, I don't know what the 14 stands for.
So, I know in, in Bismarck, as high school students, they can take advantage of a lot of the BSC courses, and graduate from high school and already be partway, if not halfway into their second year in a two-year program and stuff like that. Is, is that similar to what this is, but there, it's just through like ITV or something?
Actually, the plan is, um, to actually have some professors here. Right now, we're looking at using Beulah City Hall as a location. Cause BSC already has the online availability for like power plant, process plant, um, I think nuclear plant, there's a few other ones too, but. I know, like, the city of Garrison, where their library's at, they actually have somebody come up once in a while, and they can take their send classes. So, it's not just, um, the energy sector, there's also other, um, fields, and when you talk about STEM, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, so. Any, anything along those lines could be offered. If we get, if we get the grant, that'll help with some of the remodel type stuff that we're looking at. Also, we're, we're in discussions with some of the local industry to provide possibly scholarships, um, to supplement it. There's a preliminary, uh, I guess, a budget, so to speak, for it. They're kind of targeting, hopefully, twenty-five students in the initial program, and then see where it goes from there. I know, I mean, I, I've been out of college a while, but when I went to college, there was a lot of my peers that came in with twenty to thirty credits, so they would only be a sophomore. And I didn't have that opportunity, I was as fresh as a freshman kid.
Well, even now, without the T4, I don't, my daughter's a junior, she's taking two college classes right now. Um, what's pet cam plant? Please.
So, they, yeah, so, pet cam plant basically takes petroleum products, and they produce plastics. Uh, that's why teaming up with a regional recycling center, they could bring in plastic from around, actually, it's a, if it went through, we would actually be importing plastic from the five-state area. They'd be refining it, and then the pet cam plant would actually be producing the, the little beads that they use to reduce, like, your plastic bottles and various other plastic type things. That's, if, if that happened, they're looking at three possible locations in North Dakota. I know one is Beulah, and DGC, one is Spiritwood, Mike Jamestown, I don't know where the third one is. The, one of the first things on their criteria is natural gas. That's why DGC is a high, because they actually have natural gas there, they produce it, plus the pipelines there, so even if DGC didn't produce it, they'd still have it. DGC also fits that they have wastewater and water treatment plant, they have rail, they have, um, highway, um, they also have their own, um, fire. Fire and protection services there. They basically have everything that this plant would need, including the land.
Yeah, have they come to the county commission, or is it?
Um, they haven't come to the county commission yet. But, I think a lot of these things have kind of been coming together, you know, your economic development directors, not so much the commission level or the city level.
Okay. All right, one last question with your mayor, with your commission, county commission, how, what's the latest with the wind ordinance and the moratorium on wind?
Um, the moratorium, uh, I believe it's set to expire in May. We've had, obviously, the wind ordinance has gone through planning and zoning, it's been at the commission level, there was some discussion, actually, there's a couple sections that Eliza Taylor is going to begin with. People from the coal site and also from the wind site. She's planning on having an update on the wind state over there with that. We're hoping, but we're targeting to have that wind ordinance in place by the end of the year. And then with that, then we'll look at whether we would lift that moratorium on wind, but we're planning on not lifting that until we have an ordinance in place. There's also a solar, uh, moratorium in place, and I didn't know that until a couple of months ago, when they brought it up. There's been no activity on ordinance for solar at this point. So, I think that would be the next, next step is a solar ordinance as well. From the county commission level, um, it would be hard to see which entities can produce electricity in the county. We're trying to get everybody to play together, um, but we don't want to be the referee in telling people who can get on whose transmission lines. We think that's more of a public service commission. And also, if it's privately owned by a company, I don't think we should tell them that they have to get that other people on. So, that's kind of out of the realm of, I think, commission level, that's more about state level.
All right, thank you, any other questions?
I don't know if you've ever had Beulah mayor in your.
Not in the twelve, not in the twelve years I've been sitting in this room. You're always welcome though, Travis.
Well, and we actually switched, uh, cause we always met the first and third Monday, we actually made the second and fourth Wednesday now.
Oh, really?
So.
Did you do that for Dan's sake?
No, I did that for, I did that for my sake.
Second, fourth Wednesdays?
Yes. So, instead of America on Monday, that's why I do Wednesday.
Awesome. All right, well, thank you, appreciate you being here, appreciate the updates. All right, six B, you can stay for the rest of me if you like.
Well, we'll see, see how long it takes, you know, I've been to a fair amount of meetings in my day.
Chamber, day of proclamation.
Yes.
All right, Anthony, you're up.
That is actually taking place this Wednesday. I was in Marlboro last week for the Main Street Summit Conference and Economic Development, wonderful information, and when I got back, I realized, oh goodness, we need to do a proclamation. And it's a good thing that today we met, because I quickly made one for you all, and basically, it's just telling the public that, um, you would announce and support the efforts and the collaboration of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm not just talking about my board of directors and myself, it's all of us. Because without our ninety-one, or sorry, ninety-two, ninety-one Chamber of Commerce members, we wouldn't have a community or a Chamber of Commerce. So, um, basically, again, as you guys know, we're trying to promote, um, or celebrate the challenging work and accomplishments that the Chamber and the community as a whole does. And promote a healthy economic, or economy, and improve quality of life. So, just to basically show your support, and what I'll do on Wednesday is be off, make surprise visits to, um, businesses, I might show up with a treat or two, and if you see a business owner, say thank you. And it's to show support of our Chamber of Commerce members, including our city, because you are a Chamber of Commerce member. And our newspaper, and our law office, so thank you so much. And, um, that, that was it, I just wanted to ask your blessing and make it official, I guess.
Okay, we can do that. Need a motion though, do that, please. Yeah, with a motion by Hack.
Second.
Second with turn, discussion. Let's do a roll call for that.
Hack.
Aye.
Sir.
Aye.
Noah.
Aye.
Oh, no.
Aye, motion carried. Anthony, anything else you want to talk about with the Main Street conference, if you're there?
It was, I always come back with awesome ideas, and then I get depressed because, it's like, oh my gosh, we need new light poles, but anyways.
About paint, we paint them.
Can we paint them?
Just sort of paint.
Um, it's, I think there were nine hundred and ten weeks virtual and in-person, I hung out with our Buster and the Fever, um, so that was very entertaining, to say the least.
What happens after?
Uh, one thing that really stood out was the economic development and learning about the hydrogen, um, pipeline, or what he would call, like, he was just talking about, with Highway 200 versus Highway two.
Natural gas.
I get scared, basically, just because I want economy here, and infrastructure here, so, uh, learned a little bit about the whole development of how that happens. But as part of Main, Main Street, um, we're doing what we can to keep our little towns thriving, um, strong towns, I forget his name. He was there talking about empty buildings, mind you, I have to, ought to root Stevens about her empty building, she might be willing to rent out that front part, and I did talk with Dreamgirls Optique, saying, if you aren't going to have it, can we at least? saying, if you aren't going to have it, can we at least put up window decals, like historical pictures? And actually, we talked about this at CBD to, to get those window decals, so just to dress up our, our Main Street a little bit more. Coming back with great ideas. It was, it was good to go and, but it's always good to come back to be inspired, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so, okay, well, I'm gonna go help on. Nice to see you again, Travis.
Yeah, nice to see you.
Okay, moving down to eight eight. Condomination process at three ten, four thousand in Northwest. Monty, what do you, so this, everything was, you have to have a meeting, right?
Yeah, we were trying to get it arranged to get the inspector in and going to let them know exactly what they needed to do if they were intending to try and keep it as a structure in Hazen. They were scheduled to meet Tuesday, then it was rescheduled to Wednesday and I have not heard back from the inspector since.
Okay. Because let's, remind me, what's the date we gave leases that?
Well, they were supposed to appear at the last meeting, actually, and without having it re-inspected as far as the interior. All he saw was the outside, so there wasn't all real.
Didn't, yeah.
Yeah. So you just keep kind of pushing it down the road. I don't know if you wanted to set a drop dead date on this.
Well, our inspector needs to get that part done. Water sewer report. Streets cemetery.
Um, the normal leaves probably every day or every other day. We're still on the thing of that. And we had moisture last week and it was phone calls and you can't make it happen in an hour.
Fast enough, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Other than that. Monty, I think we're kind of, until spring, on hold with all the paint, with the hole.
Yeah, yeah. The availability, you just walk in there and they couldn't get it.
Then that, we had a minor repair on the garbage truck. It's cases deal, but it sounded like David and Frank and Ryan and whoever else. And then.
Sweeper and mower truck working well?
Yep.
This one's a bad thing to die.
Yep, minor little hiccup with our, with our, I'll just call it the tractor maintainer. I don't know what we caught. It was, was it under their thousand dollar window?
Yeah, yeah, the land plane got in the way of going to that one area and then rolled up north and developed.
And it wasn't, it wasn't the, it wasn't the metal cover, it was not sure what it was, if it was our grass cribbing or whatever.
Okay, thank you. Finance bussing. And Nancy's not here for police, fire. Monty, you know anything about anything there?
The only thing will be that I don't want to probably.
Yeah. And no Buster tonight for HCD.
Will still be recovering.
Yeah, Anthony, Anthony, that.
I forgot one important thing. I, I went there, reading the law too.
Of course.
I got free books from Bolton and more and it's about, I was a professional, Monty. Parker the planner, Will the civil engineer, the land surveyor. Parker the planner, looks like I got an extra one. Then the natural resource specialist, the GIS professional, Green Trees and Sam, it could be Mike, I guess. And then Walter the raindrop and Dove the water drop and Will the civil engineer. So if you ever get invited to go to a school and talk to the students about, and that's the teacher in me, what it is our city does, what you do, what your portfolios are. I don't know, Monty said we didn't have some of these. But hey, it's a free book set, so it's gonna let you all know.
Are you nominating yourself to do that?
I, you guys know me, I love your students. So I was excited and more engineer lives there too. And I got a stocking hat and all sorts of other things. So anyways, I just was gonna share that with you all.
Thank you. Ten A, he's a visitor's guide. All right, so there. Last, last couple years we gave four fifty, in two thousand nineteen we gave two hundred.
Well, basically, we've done the inside print cover the last couple of years, which is the four hundred and fifty dollars, yeah.
Need a motion to approve one of these.
Need a motion to do the same as the last two years, the four hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, it went up ten.
Oh, went in four sixty.
Four sixty.
Four sixty, I'm sorry.
Okay, the motion by Hack.
Second A.
Second by pillar. Discussion. So aren't we, I guess, a chamber member? We are?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, four fifty. I looked at the wrong line. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, four fifty. Thanks for picking it up.
Four, four fifty, not four sixty.
Four fifty.
That's better.
I was gonna vote no.
Thanks for pointing.
Who's next?
I did.
Roll call.
Hack.
Hi.
Pillar.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Orenor.
Hi, motion carried, thank you. All right, now the twelve A, police department, in-vehicle cameras. So we got a couple options.
Yeah, there were, they've been having issues with them. I think these were old cameras that actually came from the sheriff's department when they upgraded years ago. They're beyond the useful light, finding parts for them is really difficult or impossible. Basically, the cameras would be fifty-nine ninety. Everything else would be optional. The enhanced connectivity bundle, basically, when they get near their Wi-Fi signal, it would update or they could just use the Wi-Fi at the PD to transfer. It does have an SD card, so they can always pull the SD card, take it in and transfer. But the enhanced connectivity bundle is another seven hundred. The Secure Max is basically uploading stuff to the cloud, which when visiting with Jim, he didn't think was real necessary if they can store everything locally and back it up.
Okay, so without the connectivity bundle fifty-nine ninety, the width is sixty-six ninety, yeah?
Yes.
Is that for one or two?
That is for two. We had contacted a couple other companies and never did get anything back from them.
Do you know how soon, if we knew, yes on this, Monty, it would?
I didn't. I honestly didn't ask them that.
Where do they, they do the install or they just provide?
They do the install. They're out of Michigan. These, this is the same company that did the surveillance systems for the transit buses and vans.
Move to approve the fifty-nine, fifty-nine ninety. We have motion by Stern.
Second A.
Second by pillar, discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Hi.
Hiller.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Orenor.
Hi, motion carried. All right, update the electronics, good. All right, group of bills. Didn't look like any these additions were nothing outstanding.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, with a motion by Hack. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hiller.
Hi.
Orenor.
Hi. Motion carried, you mean, Karen? Thank you.